Where is stopwatch on Samsung?
Welcome everyone to this regularly scheduled public hearing meeting of Monday, December 20th, 2021. And this is our last public hearing for the year of 2021. I want to thank everyone for being here with us and the members of the public. Tonight on our screen, I have, as I see them, Councilwoman Shirley Sargent, Councilwoman Wilderly's Bermuda's Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti and Councilman Nick LeBron. So before we start the meeting and I go through our agenda this evening, I want to go through a couple of housekeeping rules. This public hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the following procedures. Each person wishing to address the council or committee therefore shall upon recognition by the presiding officer give his or her name, address, and if he or she represents a group shall in addition state for the record, the name and address of said group or organization and shall limit his or her remarks to five minutes when addressing the council body. All remarks should be addressed to a council as a body and not to any individual council member. Any persons, any persons making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith fair by the presiding officer from future audience at said meeting unless permission to remain is granted by a two-third vote of the council members present and voting. During a public hearing, there shall be no debate by the council, although questions may be asked by a council or person making such presentations. For members of our community, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcasted and recorded by the Hartford Public Access Television and can be viewed via Hartford Public Access TV Facebook page, Compex Xfinity Channel 96, www.hbatv.org or Channel 6032 for foreign tier customers. Spanish interpretation is provided through a partnership with the City of Hartford Public Library. Additionally, accommodations can be made with notice if you make a written request or call the office of the council president. I also want to welcome to the screen Councilman Gail, Councilman Josh Mixtum and Councilman, which is, which he is also our Majority Leader, Thomas Clark. For the agenda this evening, we have one item on the agenda and that is from Mayor Bonin with a company resolution authorizing to execute all necessary documents and agreements and to take such other action as he and the corporation council may deem appropriate and the best, in the best interest of the city in order to enter into a revised brown lease agreement with the current owners of the Hilton Hotel and RMS Companies. So I also want to state that we have 16 members who have registered with my office to participate in public comment this evening. You have five minutes to address the council body. Councilwoman Marilyn Marilyn Rosetti will be our timekeeper this evening. As I call your name, like I stated before, please state your name, your address. If you're with a company, please state that for the record. And also state for the record if you're speaking against or for this resolution. With that said, I am going to call the first person that I have on my list. And that is David Sheik. David Sheik, you have the floor.
It's Council President. Thank you very much. Just want to make sure you could hear me.
Yes, we can.
My name is David Schick. I am the Senior Strategist at Shelburne Global Solutions based in Brooklyn, New York. And we are proud to be active participants in Hartford, Connecticut. We are the owners of four major office buildings. And now in the development stage of hundreds of residential units downtown and in the North End, as well as partners and joint venture partners in the reestablishment of Pratt Street as a major commerce street in the city of Hartford and actually in the region. And I speak in support of the Hilton proposal and for various reasons. We're in a pandemic. Things are truly difficult for people personally, for businesses, and in particular for the downtown, the CBD Central Business District of Hartford. Prior to the pandemic, there was a tremendous upsurge in interest in the downtown. And that kind of interest in the downtown spills over to all the neighborhoods of the city. A healthy downtown is a healthy city and a healthy city and the various different neighborhoods make a very healthy downtown. Because of the pandemic, a lot has changed, especially with respect to bringing in tenants to commercial buildings. There's a lot of downsizing in the city and very difficult to attract tenants to the city. The primary mover, the primary reason why potential tenants will look at our downtown is for their employees. Do they have a place where their employees could live? It's probably the single biggest factor in a decision that would be made whether to relocate to the downtown. And because of the efforts of several companies like development, Laz, investments, our company, Randy Salvatore, and many others who I won't list. In moving forward, even during the pandemic, on building residential units, it is what is crucial to the health of the downtown and to the city. We all agree that the city needs more hotel space. And unfortunately, it's an area that needs a lot of work and a lot of help. But the Hilton Hotel, which is a very prominent location, is a very important asset to the city. If it remains in the condition that it's in, it's a blight for the city. It will ultimately close. The owners have tried everything over the years to try to make it work economically and it hasn't worked. And this proposal actually combines, it's a win-win for everybody. It retains hotels, rooms in the city, which are desperately needed. And it gives the city more residential units, which as it looks right now is something that people are very favorable about. The rental rates on new units are excellent. People are motivated to build more units. And I think it is something that the city needs and the city should embrace. Although in the real world, I guess you would call RMS and Shelbourne and the others competitors. In fact, we're all in the same, we're here for the same reason. We're trying to help establish Hartford as the great city that it is to attract new people to live in the city, new people to work in the city, to bring the retail to a level of vibrancy, to get rid of the eyesores in the city, which we all inherited and trying to really develop around a plan that makes the city live, work, play, and makes it a great walkable city and an enjoyable city, takes advantage of the culture of the city, the people of the city. And again, makes everything around the city, the neighborhoods and downtown itself strong. We strongly support this endeavor. We compliment the owners at Hilton for really working hard and working with the city and the state at CRDA and others and trying to get a plan that really is a win-win. We're fully supporting. We wish our competitors and our colleagues a lot of luck on this. And we would hope that the city council would see it the same way. Thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sheik, for your comments. Have a nice evening. For the record, I want to state that Councilman Sanchez has joined our public hearing meeting. Next to speak is Sally Allard. Sally, you have the floor. David, do we have Sally?
Yes, I'm attempting to move forward. I think it, okay, she's good now.
Okay, thank you. Sally, you have the floor.
Okay, sorry. I don't, I thought it was on. Okay, I'm Sally Allard. I live at 52 Pine Ridge Drive, Andover, Connecticut. I'm in Hilton employee and I'm not sure if you were aware that the Hilton is a longevity hotel. I myself have worked there for 28 years. My son and nephew, 15 years. My daughter has worked in the hotel for five years. And the loss of these jobs will be financially hardship for us. We have families to take care of. We have mortgages, healthcare to pay and, you know, and many other expenses in our, in our lives. I am 63 years old and I am not ready to retire. I have many more years to be able to work. But my concern is where do I go to find work when I've worked in a hotel as long as I have at this hotel? It's a very stressful and I have been very worried about what I'm going to do and how I'm going to pay my expenses. It's, I asked the city council to just please slow down the spending of millions of dollars of taxpayers' money and the firing of myself and my coworkers. And we asked that the women's, they own many properties in the city area and they have a lot of money. If they're going to use taxpayers' money, why can't they make sure that those of us who are losing our jobs at the Hilton are taken care of somehow? That's, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Next to speak is Sandra Walton.
Hello?
Hi Sandra, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Sandra Walton and I, I live at 17 Prospect Street in Bloomfield, Connecticut. I have been working at the Hilton for the past, for approximately about 15 years. And I am a housekeeper and also a guest service agent. And this job, it has allowed me to purchase my own home to provide health insurance for me and my family, and it has also helped me to keep my head above waters. Now, I am asking for the city council to just slow down and to look into this a little deeper because if, if you're going to be giving these companies so much of our hard-earned money, at the end of the day, at least we should have job security. How can you be giving them all of this money and then half or maybe three quarter of us will be losing our jobs? Now, where can we go to find jobs? There are people who have been here for 20, 30 years. Nobody is gonna want, look at Sally. Sally's my coworker. Who's gonna employ her at 63 years old? She's almost heading towards retirement and she's not ready yet. And I don't think she should be forced to do so because she's strong and she can do it. And all of us who works there, we want to work. We don't want to be home. And if this is something that is gonna enhance the place, why not use it and make it into, enhance the hotel? Why do we have to have luxury condos, condos and apartments? There's so much of that downtown. The Hilton is in the middle of downtown. And I know, because I've been there all this time and we have business coming there even during what, during the pandemic. It was open, you know, so I don't understand why they have to want to shut it down or to even, you know, displace us. We don't want to be on the state. We don't want to be on, we don't want to be asking for anything. We just want to be able to work, go to work every day and, and come home to our families and be secured. So with that being said, I'm asking you all to look into this. I wish you all Merry Christmas, a prosperous new year. And I'm praying that you guys will think about us while you're enjoying your holidays and help us to enjoy our next holiday or the holidays to come. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. You have a good evening as well. So next to speak is Jessica Davilab, followed by Jacqueline Malo, followed by Timothy Bradwell and Harvin Ahmed. And I just confirmed with David Grant that they are not, they have not signed into the line yet. So I will move forward.
Actually just logged in, Council President.
Who did?
Haroon Ahmed.
So Haroon Ahmed, you have the floor. Hello, Haroon, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Haroon Ahmed. I'm living in Manchester, 32 Elro State. And I've been employed for Hilton last 15 years. I'm working there. I have a family and I have a mortgage to pay. My, I have three children. They're going to the university and college and school. And I have to support them. So this job is very important to me. If I lost this job, I might lost my house. And I have a very hard time to supporting my children. So this job is really, really, very important to me. So I want, they should open the Hilton again. And there is a lot of business up there. That's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next to speak on our list is Kevin Cortenson. Cortenson. Kevin, you have the floor. Please state your name, address, and if you're speaking for or against the resolution for the record, please. And Kevin, if you can unmute yourself so that we can hear you.
Okay, hi, my name's Kevin Quirterson. I live in Manchester, Connecticut, and I am against the proposal of what they want to do. I'm a Hilton employee of seven years. Since I've been with the company, I started in the kitchen in the restaurant, but until that closed, I moved to housekeeping. Since I started after my first year, I was acquiring benefits. I never had that in any other job. And it was great to have because I could provide health insurance and benefits for my wife and my son. Going through the years, even during COVID, I was getting calls every day for three to four weeks, months at a time to come to work. I'm not sure why they think there's no business. The hotel has been around for as long as I can remember as a kid. And to turn it into apartments, the city would lose a big, important structure of that. People come to stay at that hotel particular because of what it has to offer. The employees need their jobs and they love what they do and they've been there for so long that everyone can see that. The turnover rate is very slim to none. I think there's plenty of other apartment buildings being built in the area that they can utilize. It should remain a hotel and the employees love to work there and we love what we have to offer to the city of Hartford. People come in and out from different states. We have regular contracts that we've had as long as I've been there for seven years that come every year. There's been nights they've been sold out for months, even during COVID. And it will continue to stay that way with all the events at the XL and some at the convention center as well. If it weren't for the hotel, I would never have insurance or benefits because most jobs are hard to come by with that. Thank you very much and hope everyone takes all this into consideration when they make their decision.
Thank you, Kevin, for your comments this evening. I was just notified that Timothy Brasway is here with us today and you, you have the floor. Timothy, if you can unmute yourself and state your name, address, and if you're speaking for or against this resolution for the record. Timothy, can you unmute yourself?
There he goes.
He's still muted, David.
Yeah, I've given him the ability to unmute himself. He's just, he needs to unmute.
Okay.
I think there's a wire cross here.
We can hear you now. Timothy, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jackie Malo. I live in Vernon, Connecticut. I'm against this proposal. I am an employee at the Hilton Hartford. I've been working there for about seven-ish years, a little bit more than I think at this point. This is the first job that I've had any kind of real stability at. I was able to get insurance when I first started there, which is unheard of for me. Like, I don't, we've been working gig jobs before this. The steady income that I got there allowed me, my husband to get married. And right now we are planning, we're starting plans to build our house. We were able to move out of our parents' house and he's rented his entire life. Now we're at a point where for the first time in, in, in his, his life, he's going to be able to own some land. And if this, if I lose my job, this sets us back years to be able to really start our life. The Hilton is at a wonderful strategic location, walking distance to a lot of venues. And it has an amazing amount of banquet space there. To cut back on all that, the amount of rooms that that hotel has to quarter, it doesn't make sense. Like, it, it would be doing a big disservice to Hartford itself because people aren't going to be coming to Hartford to be able to go to these concerts and these, the, the shows and the games and stuff at the XL Center because they'll have nowhere to stay. And I, I truly hope that the city council people really consider this and really slow down and look at this very carefully before they vote. Thank you very much for your time and I hope you have a wonderful holidays.
Thank you, Jackie, for your comments. Next to speak is Donna Emelman. Or Emelman?
I don't currently see Donna on.
Okay. Do we have Donna? Diane Stevenson? Or is it Stephenson?
Diane is on.
Okay, if you can bring her on the screen, David. Thank you. Hello, Diana. Could you state your name, address? And for the record, if you are speaking against or for this resolution? If you could unmute yourself for the record?
Hello?
Hi, we could hear you now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, councilpersons. My name is Diane Marie Stevenson. I reside at 106 Hillcrest Avenue, West Hartford, Connecticut. I'm against the proposal for the record. I'm a worker at the Hilton Hartford Hotel. I have been working at the Hilton Hartford Hotel for over 22 years. I have established myself through this hotel in giving back to the community, the Women's League Daycare, the Blue Energy, being a volunteer in my job, the church that I attended on all of church ministries. I also have established myself with good affordable healthcare and a pension through this job. I also was very fortunate through programs in West Hartford to buy a home for my daughters, Monique and Victoria. I'm at two, two daughters and I am now still paying off my mortgage. I'm 63 years old. And at this stage of the game, I was a Hilton honors for my people that would come in. That mean I took care of the best of the people that came through the city of Hartford, the presidential, the SARS judges that had cases in the Hilton. I know that they love the Hilton. And people want to come to a good Hilton. So with me working there over the 22 years, I even know the city has come in there and have banquets and things. I do know that being a member of the Hilton Hartford Hotel, we've drawn a lot of business. And, and I'm 63 years, I'm 63 years old now. And at this stage of the game, I'm supposed to be kind of like winding it up a little bit, but not being let go and trying to find somewhere to go at this age. It's going to be hard because they're looking for, they're looking for younger people. They, they, they don't want to give what we, we earned for, how we worked hard for. So I'm just asking council to please think of it for us at our age group because it's, it's not easy now. It's not going to be easy for these ones that's coming up. So just help us in any kind of way and take this under consideration. Have a happy holiday. May God bless you all and stay safe.
Thank you, Diana. Happy holidays to you too.
Diane.
Diane. Next to speak, I believe we have Timothy on the line. Do we have Timothy?
He could be a Zoom user that I see, so I, I will see if he, that's him.
Okay. Hi, if you could unmute yourself and state your name for the record and if you're speaking in favor or against the resolution? To the person who is registered as Zoom user, could you unmute yourself? And state your name for the record?
There we go. Hi, Tim.
Hello?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Timothy Braswell. I am going to be 60, 65 to 28 for this month. And I've been working, first of all, my address is 20 May Street, Hartford, Connecticut. I've lived here all my life. I, I work at the Hartford Hilton Hotel. I've been there for 24 years. March 17th, next year will be 25 for me. I am, I am against the proposal for more than just a couple of reasons. I'm thinking of not just about myself, but for the other employees that are there also. And we've been there for so long and we have worked together as a team. And we have come in agreement with one another there where we are going to be able to work together to cause people to want to come back and continue to do business with us. The reason why I'm against the proposal is because if we are terminated from our job, that leaves us with nothing at all. And I believe that we have dedicated our lives and our livelihoods to working there to provide for our families, to take care of our bills, to put food on the table and clothing on our children's backs. Now for this to be in consideration, my prayer is that you would really consider this and the lives that you would, well, that you would impact. We have, we have worked together as a team to be successful in everything that we intended to do, especially when it come to coming in contact with the guests that would come in. And I feel as though that for this to take place and for it to be okay would be a great injustice for us. So again, I'm hoping and praying that you guys would reconsider and that you would vote. So again, I'm hoping and praying that you guys would reconsider and that you would vote against it. And it would provide the stability that we need in our lives for our future and for the future of our children. And I would just want to thank you for your time and may God bless you and happy holidays ahead. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Happy holidays to you too.
Same to you.
Um, next to speak is Shereen Carter. Hi, Shereen. If you could unmute yourself, state your name, address, and for the record, if you're speaking against or for the resolution, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, um, council body. Uh, my name is Shereen. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So my name is Shereen Carter. I live in, uh, I live in Hartford, 75 Catherine Street. I've been living there for a very long time and um also a employee um at the Hilton. I am speaking uh against the, the uh, the proposal because I think although um, I don't know if we have all the, the information to see why um, Waterford is selling or they're trying to convert or they, but my thing is that I wanted to see if the state um would consider if you're willing to give money to assist in this conversion, why not um kind of invest more um into kind of like having the property updated. I think the main reason too why we have not sometimes attract some of the, the, the main businesses is because the property needs some, you know, need to be renovated. Um, I'm speaking personally because I work there and I'm in close contact with a lot of our guests and I can tell you that they're not for the apartments and the hotel together. Because this has become public knowledge and they're seeing it from different states and they have been reaching out. And I, I just wanted to make sure that they're exa, you know, that everything is exhausted, like they really go in and really have a plan to make sure that these residents, whether you live in Hartford, you know, I've been there for 13 years, but as you can see, there's people that have been there for many, many years. This is their livelihood. And this is in a prime location. I think it just need to be marketed properly. I think it's just, um, it's not so much about the apartments building. Yes, you know, an investor going to look on it on their side and try to, you know, do what's best for them. But in terms, I see a lot of properties downtown that can be turned into um apartments, lots of it. Um, so I don't think the Hilton should be considered to be apartments. I think they should really invest. The state should really invest in this property and really assist the owners to see how, what best outcome can be done. But I don't think the um, the um, the hotel and the um, the apartment is a great idea. I don't support it. Thank you.
Thank you and have a nice evening.
You too. Thank you.
Bye. Uh, next to speak is Kim Davis. Hi, Kim. The floor. If you could state your name, address, and if you're speaking for or against this resolution for the record, please. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Kimberly Davis. I live at 87 Grant Street in Hartford. Um, I am speaking against the proposal. Uh, I also am a lifelong resident of the city of Hartford. And I've been working at the Hilton for over 30 years. And my idea when I started working there was not to be there for 30 years, but I was working because my mother also had worked at that hotel. And um, here I am 30 years later. And one of the things that uh is bothering me about this whole situation is that the fallout from us losing our jobs is not just about us as a singular person, but there's many other people involved. My mom now is a 94-year-old woman. And I also have a mentally disabled sister that I look after. And if I lose my job, that's going to affect them because I do help them fit both physically and monetarily. So it's going to have an impact on a lot of residents in the city of Hartford. It's just not going to be 30 or 40 people. There's going to be a lot of residents in the city of Hartford that this is going to be a extreme hardship for. We aren't going to be able to find another job. These are good paying union jobs that we have dedicated our lives to. And it isn't right that we're not even being considered in this whole issue. It was just thrown upon us last week when we found out and it's like, you know, the floor, somebody pulled the rug out from underneath us. And if, you know, all this taxpayer money is going to be given to them, we need to be considered. We need to have some type of security. We need to know what's going to happen. Where are we going to go? Somebody needs to figure that out. And then, you know, we can start figuring out what's, what else is going to happen. We just need to calm down and think about this because we need our jobs, just like, you know, everybody else needs their jobs. And I'm sure there's nobody from the Waterford Hotel Group. There's nobody from, you know, Randy Salvatore. They don't live in the city of Hartford. We do. And that's all we're asking is just to consider us. We need to be taken care of also. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Have a nice holiday.
You as well, Kim. Thank you for your comments. So I believe, uh, David, you're going to bring, is it Sethlyn Wade on the screen? Maybe is the person or someone else using their name to speak?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking is that maybe the, someone else signed in under Sethlyn.
Hi, Sethlyn. You have your hand up. If you could unmute yourself and state your name, address, if you're speaking for or against uh this resolution for the record, you have the floor.
They just declined.
So David, for the record, um, we don't have Desiree Frankie, uh, Ralisha McCall, Deborah Myers, or Justo Ortega. Um, I know that we do have 34 participants and I also uh am under the understanding that you just texted um in the chat, if anyone else wants to address the uh console body, they can do so um by putting it in the chat. So we will wait for a couple of minutes to see if anyone else wants to address the console body. Because if not, um, that would conclude our public hearing uh meeting for this evening. Is there anyone else um who's here with us this evening that wants to address the council body? Daphne Sherman, I see that your hand is up. Daphne, you have the floor. Could you please state your name, address, and if you're speaking for or against this resolution?
Good evening, Mister and Miss Speaker. My name is Daphne Sherman. My address is 163 Coldbrook Street in Hartford, Connecticut. I worked at the Hilton for 24 years, but next year will be 25 years. And the Hilton mean a lot to me, so I don't agree with the proposal because we need our job as to the younger one, them who coming up. I'm not speaking for just me, for the rest of my coworkers then. They need their health insurance and they need to see like these apartment and the hotel together to look right for the city. So I would want, want for um trying to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Daphne.
And have a Merry Christmas.
You as well. Thank you for your comments this evening. Next to speak is uh Sally Allard. Are you with us, Sally?
It's actually my husband Joe wanted to speak. Is that okay?
Absolutely. If you could state his name, address for the record, and if he's speaking for or against the resolution?
Uh, I am against the resolution. My name is Joseph Allard. Uh, I'm at 52 Pine Ridge Drive in Andover, Connecticut. And I heard a passionate pleas of these uh, of my wife's coworkers about their jobs. Um, I, I gotta say, who in this day and age is that passionate about their jobs? I ask each and every one of you, how many, how many times have you looked across your, the people that you work with and seen them this passionate about a job? These people have worked at this hotel and, and know each other and have co-existed together as a Hilton family for years. And, and where do you find that camaraderie? Not to mention the fact that the Hilton, just the name Hilton draws people into the city. If you put something else i- in that city, what would draw them? And now you talk about loss of jobs. Uh, there's not only a loss of jobs when that Hilton goes down, but everything around that area, the people that came to visit the Hilton that dined out and around in those areas. That's loss of business, loss of revenue for the, 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 the city itself. Yes, people are going to come in and live there, but what's their nightlife going to, night, nightlife going to be? How many times do you go out and eat in restaurants every night? No, these people are going to live in the city. They're going to go up to their high-rise apartments and that's where they're going to make their food. How much really are they going to have a nightlife in the city? More so than the people that come in to visit the city? I think not. And there are so many places that they could build. Now, now can these, can, with all the other hotels that the Wellmans own, can't they take in some of these people? If, if they can, why don't they? There is so many business, uh, so many things that can come to the Hartford Hilton. There's so many, there's, there's, there's things that they've done to subvert business from coming there, like the restaurant that they had downstairs. People would come in off the street. They wouldn't go into the uh, into the hotel to get a, a, a room maybe, but they would come in to get a drink or to get a meal downstairs. And that's not even available to them. They've taken away revenue in certain ways off, away from that so that they can come before you and say, oh, look, we're in poverty. But they've done a lot of it to themselves in the way that they've managed that hotel. Bring that hotel back with good managers and that hotel will thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Next to speak is Christina Ortega. Christina, if you can unmute yourselves, state your name, address, um, if you're speaking for or against this resolution for the record. Thank you.
Hi, good evening to all. Um, I'm here, I'm with the Hilton. My name is Christina. I worked at the Hilton for almost 10 years. My father also works at the Hilton. His name is Justo Ortega. He's been at the property as well for over 20 years and he's a homeowner. I'm also looking into being a homeowner myself, but the uncertain pretty, it's just a little bit make me a little nervous about the situation. Um, my concern is a little bit against, I'm against the situation because the hotel in downtown has a lot of attraction. We have the XL Center, we have the Xfinity, we have the Convention Center, we have the Webster Theater, we have the Hartford Infinity Hall. So there's a lot of things that takes place in the area in downtown. Where are you going to send all these people when they come into Hartford? And one of us, where are you going to send all these people? Sometimes these conventions hold up up to a thousand people. If there's no a thousand rooms, where are you going to send these people? You're going to send them outside the downtown area? You know, so I'm just a little concerned about that. That's one of the things. And me, my livelihood, you know, my health insurance, my pet, you know, my pension, my father's pension. And it's not only for me, it's every workers that's been there. I started there 10 years ago. When I started there, it was almost 200 workers. Down going to 2019, we went down to 150 work. As COVID happened, now we literally down to less than 50 workers that comes into work, which is sad that, you know, this is actually, actually is happening. So I'm hoping that the city council could work with the state, the state could work with the owners and see if it's a better solution because Hilton needs to be there. Hilton needs to be there. That's all I can say. I wish everyone a happy holidays and thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Happy holidays to you too. So this is uh the third time um that we addressed the participants on this call. Um, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council body um to speak for or against this resolution? Um, I know that David um has talked to everyone, has uh sent out a, a chat message. I don't believe there is no one else who wishes to address this council body, but I will wait a minute to see if someone else uh who is participating uh this evening is on a screen with us uh would like to address the council body. Thank you, David. Uh, so I just got notification and I'm also seeing in the chat that no one has responded. Um, with that said, I want to wish everyone, uh, my council colleagues, members of the public, members who are watching us through uh Hartford Public Access TV or other platforms, uh, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Everyone stay safe. Um, like I stated before, this is our last meeting and we will see you, God willing, next year in 2022. Thank you. And again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to everyone. Good night. This meeting is adjourned.